Good evening, everyone. Welcome. President Iain Uzzi is out. I'm filling in. Good to see you all. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Iain Uzzi. Ms. Berrios Brooks.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Ms. Castellano Minaya.
Here.
Ms. Clayton Fernandez.
Here.
Ms. Ross.
Here.
Mr. Single.
Here.
Mr. Vega. Ms. Williams.
Present.
A quorum is present.
Colleagues, can I have a motion and a second to go immediately into executive session to discuss the employment history of particular persons, which may lead to the appointment of a particular person?
So moved. Castellano Minaya.
Second, Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will be back at 7 o'clock for the public hearing and then our board meeting for this evening. See you soon. Thank you.
Mic check, one, two. Mic check.
Yeah. Fantastic.
Mic check. One, two. Mic check.
Yeah. Fantastic.
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 Mic check.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion in a second to reconvene the public session?
So moved, Castellano Minaya.
Second, Ross.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Colleagues, can I get a motion in a second to open the public hearing on the 2025-2026 school district proposed budget?
So moved, Lewis.
Second, Williams.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good evening. I'm here to call the public hearing on the 2025-2026 proposed annual budget of the city school district of New Rochelle to order. Madam Clerk, would you please take attendance?
Ms. Ryan Uzi, Ms. Barrios Brooks?
Here.
Ms. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Castellano Minaya? Ms. Clayton Fernandez?
Here.
Ms. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Single?
Here.
Mr. Vega?
Ms. Williams?
Present.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. I'm going to make a few brief remarks before turning it over to our superintendent of schools. And really, I would like to thank him and his team for their tireless effort in talking about the budget with our community. They've already held ten meetings with every PTA and organization that has requested one, and they have still four more to go. So I really want to thank them for their hard work in making sure that everybody can get their budget questions answered. We were also required to have four budget meetings over the course of our meetings, and we've actually held eight. So I really want to emphasize how important it is for every single member of our community to be able to get their questions answered and understand the implications of the budget we will have folks vote on on May 20th. Finally, if you are curious, I encourage you to look at our budget website. It's right on the main page of the district website, right in the middle of the menu. And it has FAQs, both general FAQs and FAQs that were developed to answer questions that came up at various school meetings on the budget. And yeah, there's a lot of information, including the budget book and other recordings of the presentations, et cetera. So please, if you haven't already and you have questions, use that resource. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Reynolds.
Thank you very much, Vice President Barrios Brooks. To our board trustees, thank you for this opportunity. This evening, just to reiterate what was stated, if you go to our budget webpage, you'll see on the bottom of the page a compilation of recently most frequently asked questions. But if you go right above the FAQ section, you'll see questions that have been presented from different school organizations as related to the budget road shows that we have been conducting. So if one of those organizations, the PTA of that school, provided to us questions in advance, we answered them in writing, along with answering questions during each meeting. So tonight, we are going to hear from our public as relates to our proposed budget, keeping in mind that we are beginning this year, if we were to take every operation with every person that we have this year currently in place today and roll it over to July 1st of 2025, the new fiscal year, we would see a deficit of $30 million, $33 million. In order to reduce the deficit, we are asking the community to approve a 3.95% tax levy increase. That 3.95% tax levy increase would reduce the deficit from $33 million to $20.2 million. It is the $20.2 million deficit that we still have to close, and those have led to the recommendations and actions that have been shared with the community over the last month and a half or so. Also, keeping in mind that if we were to ask the entire community, the community to provide a tax levy increase that would close our $33 million deficit, we would be asking the community for 12, a 12.53% tax levy increase. So we know that question has been raised throughout our travels. So at this point, I'm going to turn it back over to our board vice president, who will lead us through this next portion of our meeting and our hearing.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. So now we will enter the public comment for the public hearing. Each public speaker will be limited to three minutes on the topic of the 2025-26 annual proposed budget of the city school district of New York. When your name is called, please state your name and address and the name of the organization, if speaking in a representative capacity. Please note that individuals are not permitted to cede their time to other speakers. And with that, our first speaker is Vince Malfattano.
Hello, Vince Malfattano, Nine Fairview Place. A couple of things. Given how seemingly chaotic a lot of this was, I have to say I commend the superintendent for bringing us to at least a somewhat reasonable point here. From 200 or so positions down to 54 positions in your letter the other day and 22 others, and then restoring seven by getting some of the charter money back. Many of those positions, the resignations, retirements, and positions not being filled, that's helpful. But we're still losing a bunch of people. And you've been very forthcoming, and I appreciate your responsiveness to my many questions to you, and I know you've been busy. But my last question, I hope you can answer to the community. With the 54 positions and others in your letter of the other day, you outlined the positions and so on by license and type. I would like to know the total of positions, which includes the retirements, the resignations, and layoffs for each licensed area and position. So in total, out of all of the positions that had to be reduced, it would be helpful before I vote on May 20th to know, in total, what is the amount of English teachers, amount of custodians, the amount of cleaners, so on and so forth. Also, could you please tell the public the seven or so positions that were restored by using the 1.1 million from not having to fund the charter school? What positions were those? Maybe you could announce that tonight. It would be helpful. Another thing, I've mentioned over time, our policy that we don't have to have of paying $5,000 a kid to bus kids to very expensive private schools, miles and miles outside of New Rochelle. It's nice if we have the money, but we don't have the money. So I'm asking you, is it fair that people have to lose their jobs because powerful interests make sure they get a perk in terms of sending their kid to a $25,000 or $30,000 a year private elementary school or such? These aren't special ed kids or kids with special issues. These are just general ed kids whose families have some pull in town. Okay, we don't have the money. So now it's time to ask yourself who you are. Who do you really represent? The powered interests in town? What does our union have to say about that? What does the working class have to say when this board protects a few sacred cows and tells others, "You have to lose your job"?
Mr. Malfattano, thank you very much for your comments and your requests. We will take most of your requests into consideration and potentially share the information as relates to specific individuals and their racial makeups at a later date. We're not prepared to do that currently because we have not completed our process of potentially informing individuals who would be affected. But to answer a more direct question, I believe that I can do so, with the reallocation of the $1.2 million that we have that I can do so, with the reallocation of the $1.2 million that we have brought back into our budget consideration away from the charter school, we have, in fact, brought back two staffing, five foreign language teachers, one attendant teacher, and three reading teachers.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brenda De Giacomo.
Good evening. Brenda De Giacomo, 33 Colonial Place. Okay, so we have a few things to adjust here. I'm tired, one, of feeling that my teachers aren't being supported enough. I'm tired of hearing teachers that are scared, and even though we say we're cutting back teachers, we still have teachers that I hear are scared. They're scared to talk of losing their job. They're scared to do anything because they have to justify it, feed the family. Some people are wondering, oh, why do I have to go for the resignation so I can get the letter? How am I supposed to provide for my family? Do we realize the expenses? Plus, we're making the tax go up. However, are our families supposed to afford it? And then, my son at school with the bus, with the construction going on, the bus has been running late. How are we supposed to do two special ed runs on that bus when that bus is getting my son to school just on time? Is that going to give them enough time to pick up the other students and get the next location? And then I'm tired of people at my son's school telling my son to stop saying stranger danger. Well, my son's going to keep saying stranger danger. This girl should know to stay away. I made it known, made calls to the principals. Obviously, nothing's being done. When is something going to be done so my son feels safe in school? A seven-year-old saying stranger danger? And I still haven't gotten no phone calls asking why, but this person still gets a tenure. We're giving people tenure, and then we're firing them. Like, we got to come together sometimes. We got to figure this out as a community because we're getting more buildings, more students. Then we got students crying because we got rid of the honor roll classes, and now they have to go to AP classes. Now they're worried about the classes being overpacked and not being able to learn. We're getting rid of a lot of great programs and a lot of great teachers in this district. We need to figure out what's best for our teachers and our students because these teachers here now make our students feel safe. We're taking away their safe place by taking away some of these students that they have relationships that will not be here next year. Our specialty kids don't understand that. Oh, that person's leaving, won't be there next year. Well, what if I don't like the new one? What if the new one don't like me? There's a lot of questions. How am I supposed to answer that to my seven-year-old who has a hard time understanding things as it is? When are we going to explain something to the kids at school about these teachers that they're losing? They might not be their main teacher, might be an aide, might be something else, but the kids need talking to. My son needs to understand in some way. I know he's not going to understand about the money, but they need to understand. And every time I come, I'm going to stand up for my teachers, the staff, because they're the ones who made my kids what they are today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giacomo. Next? Yes, of course.
So, Mr. Giacomo, thank you very much for your support of our teachers. Yes, they are, in fact, the boots on the ground who ensure that our students are safe and learning every day. I'm going to ask my assistant superintendent for Student Support Services to be in contact with you regarding your concern with your son. I would also like to address one of the points that you brought up as it relates to why are we providing tenure to teachers and then laying them off. Please know that by law, we must follow the probationary process and the timing that's required for the probationary process. In most instances, under New York State law, a teacher who is new to the profession, who's hired, has a four-year probationary process to gain tenure. An individual who comes to the district who has received tenure in that certification area from a prior district is entitled to a three-year probationary process. It was incumbent upon us, it was also required by law, that we went through the probationary and tenure review process before we completed the layoff process because any individual who was slated to receive tenure should still receive tenure. In the event that person who received tenure, I wouldn't say unfortunately, had to be laid off, their tenure rights continue in this district. So once they're put on what's called the preferred eligibility list, that Pell List for seven years, should we recall them back to work? It is as if it were the very next day from when they left, and they come back with tenure. If we waited until they came back to prefer tenure onto a candidate that's eligible for it firstly, they would get it by what's called estoppel. Estoppel is a state law that says that they would receive tenure just because of the time period if we don't take any action, and that's not something the school district would want to do. But secondly, if we were to wait until they came back, then we would have to wait until the next board meeting is available to provide them tenure, which again is outside of what's legally prescribed. So that is why we follow that process.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Miriam De Cim. Okay, well, if she gets here while we're still in the session, I'll call her up. In the meantime, our next speaker is Tom McTeague. Tig? McTeague.
Good evening. My name's Tom McTeague, and I'm a fifth grade teacher and Fuse Building representative. So while we are relieved that the number of Fuse job cuts has been reduced from over 150 to 43, let's be clear, losing even one position is too many. These 43 staff members directly impact our students every day, and their absence will be felt in our schools. We can and must do better. Despite these painful cuts, the district still employs over 70 administrators, many with overlapping roles and unclear responsibilities. This duplication does, I'm sorry, this duplication not only creates inefficiencies, but also undermines the overall effectiveness of our schools. We hear it constantly. Our members are asking what certain administrators do, and we no longer have clear answers. That's a problem. Duplicated functions mean wasted resources, resources that could be used to support critical programs and preserve frontline positions. We cannot allow this to continue. If we truly care about what's best for our students, we must prioritize saving jobs in our school buildings, not protecting excess at the top. The superintendent recently stated that the City School District of New Rochelle compares favorably with local districts in terms of administrative size. That may be true if you're an administrator in this district. Consider this, we have more than twice as many administrators as White Plains, even though our total staff is only about one-third larger. Despite this disparity, the vast majority of proposed cuts are targeting staff, not administration. So yes, in New Rochelle, it's good to be an administrator. And please consider this, since 2018, we've seen seven, that's right, seven superintendents, each brought in their own team of central administrators. As we paid out millions in separation agreements to usher each one out of the door, we were left behind with layers of their handpicked hires. The results ablotted central office filled with assistant superintendents, directors, assistant directors, executive directors, even assistants to their assistant directors. This growing administrative bureaucracy has come at a significant cost, both financial and educational. Our students deserve better, and so do the educators who serve them every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. McTeague. I'll read to you an answer to a question that was provided to a community member when, or to two community members when asked questions as it relates to administrators. I'll use, for example, your comparison of the amount of district administrators that we have as compared to White Plains. So I believe in using data and not in conjecture when answering questions. As such, when asked that question, I used what was provided on the New York State Education Department website. So to answer the question as it relates to New Rochelle, the amount of district administrators by title as compared to White Plains. In 2023-2024, by NISID data, New Rochelle had a total of 9,648 students enrolled in the district on VEDS Day. On that same date, White Plains had 6,742 students. By comparison, in the same data provided by the New York State Department of Education Clearinghouse, White Plains, I'm sorry, New Rochelle had a total of 49 district administrators by title. That's by title reported to the state. That doesn't include building administrators or anything along those lines. So I want to make that very clear. In comparison, with 3,000 less students, White Plains had 46. So when you're looking at the district titles of administrators, you have to use comparative numbers and data as it relates to that report. I do acknowledge that we have an additional number of building administrators. So that number that we just spoke about was specific to titles reported to New York State on the district level. Having worked in White Plains, I can tell you that we do not have a vast majority of administrators more than White Plains does per capita. Now, the second portion to that question, I will read this. Between 2015 and 2020, prior to COVID, the number of total district administrators, which includes now building administrators, increased from 58 to 75. Between 2020 and 2021, during COVID and prior to Jonathan Raymond assuming the superintendency, the total number of district administrators increased from 75 to 81. Between 2021 to current, through Jonathan Raymond's superintendency, the number of district administrators increased from 81 to 88. This proposed budget looks to reduce our district administrators by 11, bringing us down to 77, which is close to pre-COVID numbers. So that is my response to that statement.
Thank you. Ms. Breslin, you are next.
Good evening. Mary Claire Breslin, Fuse President, 270 North Avenue, New Rochelle. New Rochelle Fuse has communicated our disagreement with the cuts to teaching staff while retaining redundant central administrative positions, as demonstrated by our members' attendance at recent budget meetings, as well as our Friday morning silent solidarity actions. While Fuse is pleased that some of the excess positions have recently been restored, too many have still been lost. The negative impacts of those cuts are crystal clear, as evidenced by the recent announcement of the elimination of various classes at New Rochelle High School. Despite our disagreement with the choices made, Fuse recognizes a yes vote for the school budget is essential to preserve our public schools. As we move forward, we hope that changes and improvements to the current choices are made. But we must pass this budget first. To this end, Fuse is once again committed to ensure a successful budget vote. Fuse is funding over 3,000 mailings, digital ads, and scheduling several evenings of phone banking, all in support of this budget. Our public schools are an investment in our community's future, providing the knowledge, skills, and values necessary to create an informed, engaged, and prosperous society. Investment in public education is not only an investment in students, it's an investment in the long-term success and cohesion of New Rochelle. I strongly encourage all eligible voters to vote yes on May 20th.
Thank you, Ms. Breslin. The next speaker is Vanessa Somon.
Good evening. A couple of quick questions and a few comments. One, I wanted to understand why the whole 1.9 wasn't pulled back. And isn't the 700,000 kind of like a savings, which you have said repeatedly that that's not allowed? The other thing, which I thought was going to be, or I had hoped, was that there would be other, at least other solutions considered, such as pushing back the radius to two miles, such as maybe cutting more central office, because reducing to pre-COVID levels, there is an argument that even pre-COVID levels was too many. And I think that the public has stated, and I've been to several of these meetings, that they're willing to forego some things, but they don't want to forego teachers and classroom size. You mentioned at the Trinity meeting that there was, that the average class size, the ideal one, was a class size of eight, and that there was no difference in learning outcomes between a child in a class size of nine or 37. I really dug into that, and I could find no support for that statement. I'm not going to debate it with you, but class size increase, teacher layoffs, is not what the public has wanted. You have to sacrifice something, but those two things, the public doesn't want to sacrifice. And I think we are really going to have a hard time passing this budget. And I don't think that's the right thing. I understand the consequences, but there's a disconnect. And I keep hearing the same stats, and I completely understand them, but I think that 700,000, I would move that at the very minimum and save a few more. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments and for all of your questions and for keeping them so consistent. Just to clarify for the community, the conversation that was held at Trinity was the definition, the historic definition of small class size. So I will provide to you via email some resources that you can look through that would have made that statement over the years. As it relates to the consideration of either reducing, no, increasing the radius for transportation as a consideration, I have publicly stated that that would continue to be a consideration in future years as we start the budget process moving forward, but that was not one for this year. So everything, as I stated prior, everything as it relates to the district, whether it's programming, whether it's offerings, will be at the starting point of our conversations amongst the board as it relates to considerations for budget determinations that would help to lead the building of the new budget. Oh, thank you. Yes, I actually wrote myself a note and failed to request. So the question also was, why was it determined to only use 1.2 million of the 1.9 million set aside for the charter school? The reason for that was because if you dig into the charter as it is currently written by New York State, it actually tells the charter organization that they can open their doors at any time during the school year, even if they're only opening with as few as 10 students. So if we were to reallocate all of those monies to bringing back teachers, we could be left in a position where they decide to open their door and go back on their word of not opening until September of 2026, and we would not have the funds reserved for that. The other issue is, we also determined that we wanted to, if we weren't going to utilize all of that money, that we would have a foundation for budget considerations for 2026 as it relates to the charter. as it relates to the charter school.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Edward Green.
Good evening. Ed Green, 61 Dewey Avenue. Also trying to revive the Sunset View Park Neighborhood Association. The reason I bring that up, and Ms. Breslin, I definitely want to speak to you before the end of the meeting and get involved with the phone banking. I am a yes for the vote. And I also would like to reiterate what was said earlier by Ms. Breslin, the importance of passing the budget. I do believe there are some things I disagree with it. I don't necessarily agree and I'm trying to educate myself more on the budget. But public school education is something I believe in and it's, it's a situation where the budget has to get passed. And I think we should all be focused on that. So I'm going to do my part. And in our little neighborhood association, which is between Fifth Avenue and Beauchamp Drive behind Iona College, excuse me, Iona University, I'm going to do my best to get out my neighbors and try to help pass this budget. Not a perfect budget, probably lots of issues, but if it fails, I think it'll be even a bigger problem for us. Just want to finish up since I do have 90 seconds on a personal note. I'm a proud graduate of New Rochelle High School. Graduated in 1987, the last time I was in this building, a very young Mario Cuomo was speaking to us on this stage. Not so young anymore. I also just want to mention that I'm a proud graduate of Mayflower Elementary School. Yep. Go Mayflower. Yes, Mr. Quick. I had Mrs. Barron for three straight years. Never got into the cool, young teacher, Mr. Nat Harris, who was a very young, cool teacher that all the students wanted to be in his class. So that's a big regret. Thank you very much. That's all I have. Even though I have 40 seconds, I cede to anyone who wants it. Oh, that's illegal. Sorry.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Green. And our next speaker is Lizette Gangora.
Good evening. I'm Lizette Gangora. I teach French at Isaac Middle School and I taught Spanish and French here at the high school for 17 years. The fact that foreign languages are offered in the elementary schools in New Rochelle has always been something impressive that attracted young families and first-time home buyers to this district. By initially accessing one-third of the world language department and removing languages from our elementary schools, you have removed that attraction. By my calculations, about one-fourth of the initial employees laid off were world language teachers. We don't make up one-fourth of the workforce here. Seeing that a couple of schools will retain language, language classes at the elementary level, it seems that only the schools in the less affluent areas were primarily affected. By removing language from the elementary schools, you have removed the opportunity for students to become fluent in a foreign language and thus competitive in the world market in the future. It appears that Latin and Mandarin will also be removed from Isaac Young Middle School, leaving the students who have completed the first half of Level 1, in other words, Level 1A, without the second half, Level 1B, and thus unable to get their high school credit in eighth grade. As per the Office of Bilingual Education, the World Language of New York State Education Department, not offering the 1B level of the language to students who completed 1A is out of compliance. It is not in the best interest of students for you to take away their opportunity to learn, to earn the high school language credit they were promised when they began 1A. You need to allow them to earn their high school credit. For equity across the district, you need to give the language program the importance it deserves if you hope for a chance to get the budget approved. Thank you.
Please give me a moment to collect my, I can't say thoughts, my notes. Due to this year's deficit, we've, and I'm going to read to you because I would like to keep the information as consistent as possible. If I'm not able to expound upon the points that you have brought to our attention, I will assure you that someone from my department will be writing to you, Ms. Gangora. So we have had to make very difficult decisions. Of course, our dual-language program, I want to clear a few misconceptions up also in answering your question. Our dual-language programs, which is commonly known as CILA at Ward, but that's no longer the terminology that should be used, will not be affected by any of these decisions. The children, we do agree that we must support core instruction for our students and find ways to achieve efficiencies with minimal to no impact on our students' educational experience. We were planning to remove the foreign language in elementary schools across the board. But with the reallocation of that 1.2 million dollars, we are able to bring back a portion of foreign language in our elementary schools. That is intended to be applied to all elementary schools across the board. We are looking to determine whether we can facilitate bringing back three through five FLESS in our schools, which would primarily, if I'm not mistaken, only be provided in Spanish or if it's going to be grades four and five, so that there's equity across the board for our schools. I do agree with you 100% Ms. Gangora that providing foreign language to students at an early age is absolutely a game changer. Not just for the attractiveness of the district, but more so for the opportunities and the doors that are opened up for our students. So please know that I stand behind you in that, in that thought. And we will do everything that we can in our power to bring back programs eventually, once we're able to.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. I saw Ms. Desim has arrived and then I think Ms. Tanner has also signed up. If there's anyone else that'd like to sign up to speak, please come to the clerk. And Ms. Desim, the floor is yours.
My fellow Mayflower person, Miriam Desim Mountjoy. I was a proud graduate of Mayflower too. I hate to say that because, you know, kind of dates me, but loved it, loved Nat Harris, still love him. He kept his number so that we could call him from the time that he came in and told us, this is my number, if you need me, call me. Until this day, he still has that number. Phenomenal teacher. The fact that I didn't see him become higher up in the school, and I know he has other interests, but the fact that I see that he didn't become one of our, like, really top administrators says a lot to me. In term of this budget, I love the school system. It's made me everything that I am today. And no way do I ever want to short it. Or the kids that are in there, I feel like they're all my kids. I have plenty of family in there. And the problem is, we have begged you for the data and the information so that we could work with you to determine what is it that we were willing to lose. Everybody understands we have a tight budget. We've gone through that. But let's see how best to resolve it. And I felt like the district just dug their heels in and decided to just drive that cart off the cliff and not allow us to really participate in terms of having the, the part of the decision-making to say, these are the things that we'd be willing to forego. And how much waste can we really remove? So yes, I'm with, you still have too many administrators. You keep telling me about how many kids you have, but that's where we expect a lot of the cuts because we don't have the money. And you didn't get rid of them last year when you were claiming that we needed to have cuts and transportation changes. And you're still keeping them this year. You hired them when they shouldn't have been hired. It, it costs a lot to onboard someone. So that's a lot of money spent and wasted. You let go of some, but we now have to pay their retirement or their, no, retirement, but their unemployment. In, in the midst of this also, this process is, you doge our system. That's, that's how it's making me feel because teachers who didn't want to leave, who are grateful for our district, had to leave. They were forced out. So I don't want to shortchange us, but you can't put us in this position of we have to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Desim. The next speaker is Ms. Brock.
Good evening. My name's Alexi Brock. I have proudly served as an art teacher at New Rochelle High School for 34 years, currently teaching in the PAVE program, AP Art, and Drawing and Painting classes. My connection to this district runs deep. My husband is an alumnus. We lived in New Rochelle for 15 years and my son attended Webster and Albert Leonard. I'm not just a teacher here. I'm part of the fabric of this community. At the last board meeting I spoke at, I shared my concerns and then I listened. I listened to nearly 20 of my colleagues speak passionately. Many of them were alumnus of our school system. Even more were current residents of New Rochelle, raising their own children in this school system. The staff at New Rochelle are invested in New Rochelle. This is why I must question the priorities of this board. Why are we preserving a top-heavy administration while cutting so many student-facing educators? Many members of the current administration are not residents of New Rochelle. They do not have deep-rooted understanding of how our, Linda Kelly used to say, urban suburban district operates. And she spoke about that often. In recent years, the revolving door of superintendents and administratives changes has widened the gap between the administration and the staff. We used to be a team and now it feels like us versus them. These promotes, these proposed cuts must be reconsidered and not just in isolation, but across the entire K through 12 spectrum. Everything starts at the elementary level. Foundation skills are built there, reinforced in middle school, and refined in high school. Cutting resources now jeopardizes the entire developmental arc. I've witnessed this district thrive with more students and fewer administrators. We made it work. We did better because we were united in that purpose. I respectfully urge the board to find the courage to reexamine the proposed cuts, be hyper-aware of the long-term impact on our students from kindergarten through 12th grade. Fuse members are not here for politics. We are here for the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brock. The next speaker is Ms. Taylor Tanner.
Good evening. So I have some trust issues, obviously. And everyone who knows me knows that I, I think the worst first. So one of the first issues that I had was the issue of how we got here. Was it because of development? Was it because of something else? First, it was about pilots not getting paid enough for the pilot program. And then we stopped that conversation. So exactly what happened? And I've gone to more than seven of the, of the budget presentations. So I'm still confused of why we're, we are where we are. So I do think that there's some, I have some issues. And I usually speak from a special ed perspective. I do feel that, that some, that we're in cahoots with the law firm that you guys employ. Because the things that you're doing, in particular, I asked you Superintendent Raymond, oh, I'm sorry, Reynolds. I asked you about the hourly aides that were being hired and when they will be able to be hired full-time. These are people that could be in our union. So it feels like some of these actions are union busting actions, like as if we work in Walmart. So these people will be working all day without the benefits of medical insurance, without the benefits of a sick day or personal days. There's not going to have more than likely any training. So when it comes to special ed, we're going to pay these guys a little bit more. But in the, at the end of the day, their lifestyle is not going to be as rich as some of our union members that we have here. And that's a great concern. And I almost think that it's by design. So that's concerning for me. Whenever we have membership, we have available people that could be members of the union and they're not. The next thing I wanted to talk about is the money as it pertains to the budget. We spent over $5 million when I asked, how much money do we spend in sending children with special needs out of district? And I think you said it was $5 million a year. $5 million a year for about 100 children until they're adults is a lot of money. If we better support the special education teachers when we have newly hired teachers, it would be a good idea to support them in a better way. We need more training. This is the first year in many years that we've actually had professional development training. And back in the day, there were only three people in special ed that were executives or members of the executive body. Now we have more than seven or eight. There's no way that you can tell us that that's not happening. It's happening. We have a top-heavy administration. So I think that some of those things as it pertains to the budget in particular, we could save some money by better supporting our, our teachers that we're hiring. We have about seven or eight special education jobs available that are posted today. That's ridiculous.
Ms. Taylor Tanner, thank you very much for your comments and for your thoughts. I am not at liberty to share my thoughts or reflections as it relates to making hourly individuals full-time as a potential position for disagreement and legal action as we currently stand. So I'll reserve my comments for that until a later date. As it relates to special education, I must state that this budget does not affect special education. As a matter of fact, the positions that are currently open have been open for quite some time. As many of us may be aware, there is a shortage of special education teachers that are available in the, in the teaching force. They are highly sought-after individuals. There is actually competition amongst districts as it relates to hiring special education teachers. The positions that are currently open are currently unfilled positions that have been open for quite some time. I do agree with you that the number of administrators in special education has increased. So too has special education law, as has special education legal issues that have arisen in this district. With the oftentimes newly created special education laws that happen almost overnight. And I'll use the example of the new law that was shared with the district, not the district, with the state this year of holes in special education environments. That just came upon us without any forewarning. There is a need for additional reporting and things of that nature. I am not advocating for additional positions that are not required. But we also have to acknowledge the reporting requirements that cannot contractually be supported by teaching staff as it is not a part of their contractual responsibility. And that is a part of the reason why we've had to increase our administrative staff.
Thank you. The last speaker- The last speaker signed up currently is Ms. Sharon Foote. If there's anyone else that would like to speak, please come up in the meantime and sign up with the clerk. Ms. Foote.
I have three minutes. Good evening, everyone. So, I'll be quick. My statements are, like, how did we get here? I'm sorry, how did we get here? So, I have several thoughts because as I look on this panel of people that we elected, maybe one of you have been here longer than I have, which would be Valerie. So, that's one reason. We got here because we have people representing us that voted unanimously on a budget that aren't necessarily from Nourishel and clearly don't understand the culture. We could possibly be here also because of gross neglect in the dissemination of funds throughout our district. We could have also gotten here because while you were worried about a charter school coming, you spent so much time worried about a charter school that you neglected that this other part of education is happening and it's being affected by real students. I am disturbed because I have 31,000 reasons, as that's what my taxes are at 162 Clayton Avenue, to be floored by this potential budget. No, we will not just have an increase of $49. That is, I don't even know why that was even said because it's ridiculous. I I think some ways to rectify this, as I've said before, is the 12, 15 people that were hired for administrative jobs, that'll save about $2 million. Firing people, and I know legally you can't do, you know, separate the people that actually live in Nourishel, that actually spend their money in Nourishel, that actually send their children to school in Nourishel, that you can't say, we'll hire, we'll keep you, and we'll get rid of some of maybe your buddies that you all have hired. But it is ridiculous to think that some of these men that are in the back, security guards, could potentially lose their jobs when our school clearly is not safe, that that special education still has seven positions that are available in our most vulnerable population. And I do believe the person that ran on that is not here, that you have not yet filled, and there's no legal issue about filling seven positions. And I think it's absurd if you think that these people in this audience believe that seven applicants, seven qualified applicants, just to address the special education need, did not apply in this school dish, for a position in this school district. And it almost seems like with your actions, you want to dismantle the greatness that once was the city of Nourishel Education and make it this nasty thing that it is becoming.
Are there any other speakers?
Lorraine Carl, 43 Belmont Avenue. I have to apologize, I have the wrong glasses on, so I'm going to try to read what I've written. I'd like to know the amount of funds we will be receiving from the pilot program, and it can be spent in all functions. I'd like to know if that's correct. Also, in the 2019-2020 budget, we passed the Capital Reserve Fund. And this money was supposed to be used for construction and renovations. So, how, what is the amount of that money that we have in this fund? And how can we tell in the budget, the pilot money, and also the Capital Reserve Fund money?
Thank you for your questions, Ms. Carl. Just to make sure everybody in the public understands, all of the money that was earmarked for Capital Reserve and approved by our public budget vote are still being utilized for those purposes. I also must state that I want to correct misinterpretation, misrepresentation. Developments in Nourishel are good for the public schools of Nourishel. So, we are formally stating that developments coming into this city helps to increase the tax base, and we do get our payments from the city as it relates to tax, to the taxes that are entitled to us. I will state that for some time, and again, this is prior to my coming in, I believe that there was some disconnect as it relates to understanding how pilots were being provided to the city. And again, just for edification, pilots, pilot is an acronym for payments in lieu of taxes. So, whenever development comes into the city, that development can either choose to pay all of the taxes that they're entitled to pay even before that development is completed, or they can come into an agreement with the city to pay a portion of what they are entitled to pay. And that portion can be, that payment plan basically can be designed over a certain amount of time, whether it's five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. So, that payment in lieu of taxes, meaning the amount that they're supposed to pay, still comes to the school district. Ms. Carl, to answer your question based on the information that we have this year for 2026, our payments in lieu of taxes, budget air pilots are in the amount of $6,9276. So, I hope that answers the question that you posed this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. Madam Clerk, do we have any other questions? Colleagues, can I get a motion and a second to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting this evening?
So, move Williams.
Second, Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Colleagues, we're going to move into the regular meeting again, and we're going to start with accepting minutes. Colleagues, can I get a motion and a second to accept the minutes of the Board of Education? Regular meeting held on April 3rd, special meeting held on April 16th, and special meeting held on April 24th as submitted by the Clerk and Secretary to the Board of Education?
Second, Lewis.
Second, Clayton Fernandez.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Colleagues, do I have any, does anybody have any announcements?
Very quick one. I was able to go to see Matilda and Isaac. It was absolutely fantastic. Our students did a wonderful job. The set was amazing. So, thank you to everyone that was in front of and behind the stage for pulling off such a fantastic production.
I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you to all of our teachers for everything that you do, showing up for our students every day, and for making sure that schools are a second home for our students and for each other. Thank you, thank you, thank you. There are not words, there are not enough cards, presents, gifts to give you the respect that you deserve and the gratitude that you deserve for showing up for our students every single day. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
And I would like to wish everyone a happy Mother's Day for everybody who celebrates.
Great. And with that, I turn it over to Dr. Reynolds.
Thank you very much, Vice President Barrios Brooks, to our board trustees, to the members of the community who are in the audience this evening, as well as to those who are at home watching or those who will potentially be watching at a later date. I wish you a good evening. I would like to echo a happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all of the individuals who stand in front of students on a daily basis. It's often that we serve in the roles, those, that teachers serve in the roles of parent, of guardian, of attorney, of police officer, of nurse, of doctor, of more than just a sage on the stage, but facilitator, instructor, and person who just loves our children. And I would like to wish a very happy Teacher Appreciation Week to our teachers. Also, I would like to wish a happy Jewish-American Heritage Month to all those who are of Jewish heritage. This month was established in 2006 to acknowledge the history of Jewish contributions to the American culture. In addition, I would like to wish a very happy Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. This month was established in 2009 to celebrate the contributions and impact, impact of Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders. This year's theme is "A Legacy of Leadership and Resilience." And tomorrow, I would like to wish all of our school nurses a happy School Nurse Day as you continue to serve and take care of all of our students, faculty, and staff. Finally, I'd like to wish to all of the moms who are within earshot a very happy Mother's Day on Sunday. Please keep in mind that we have a few closings coming up, so all offices will be closed on Monday, May 26th in observance of Memorial Day. And again, Memorial Day is the day that we honor all of those individuals who have passed on, who have put themselves in harm's way in some form or fashion to serve the military, to protect our freedoms, such as being able to meet tonight and speak our minds. Also, all schools will be closed from Friday, May 23rd, through Tuesday, May 27th for Memorial Day and for our weather makeup days. Schools will reopen on Wednesday, May 28th. And with that, Vice President Barrios Brooks, I relinquish the microphone.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. And with that, we're going to move to our discussion items for this evening. We have two second readings, and just as a reminder, after these second readings, they will be voted on later in the meeting. The first is policy number 4321.12, the use of timeout rooms. Dr. Reynolds or members of our policy committee, is there anything anyone would like to, any comments they'd like to make on this, on this policy? Or any questions from my colleagues?
Vice President Barrios Brooks, just some edification. These are one of the policies that had to be revisited because of some of those changes in special education law that I mentioned earlier. It's as a result of those changes in special education law, we had to update our policy. We are using the example of the New York State School Boards Association policy, which is probably the most prescribed policy provider in New York State. We're utilizing that as the template for the policy. And in addition, we have made some variations to it that are Nourishel in nature based on our programming.
Thank you for that. Colleagues, any comments on either policy number 4321.12, use of timeout rooms, or policy 5500, student records? We're going to move to the liaison reports. Colleagues, do you have any liaison reports? Seeing none, we're going to move to the public comment. Ladies and gentlemen, we are about to convene into the public comment period of the meeting. The Board of Education adopted policy 1230 in April 22 to ensure all members of the public have the opportunity to speak at both our board meetings each month. We believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues. Having said that, please note that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, understand the board will not respond to your concerns and questions tonight. We take your concerns and questions seriously and want to have sufficient time to process and research issues if need be. We will, however, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel and students. Please know, however, that we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels. Finally, we recognize that right now, our nation and community are polarized on a number of issues. That said, we want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of our school board and members of our community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for one another. In that spirit, we will insist that all speakers and members of the audience maintain civility and respect for any divergent views that others possess. We ask that the speakers please address their comments to the board directly rather than the audience. In the unlikely event the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period if you so choose. Tonight, we have set aside 45 minutes for public comment, which each, where each speaker who has signed up before 3:30 today has three minutes to speak. If a person requests to speak after 3:30, speakers may sign up in person at the meeting with the clerk and will be afforded the opportunity to speak for two minutes during the public comment period if time permits. And our first speaker of the night? Ms. Karen Zager.
Good evening. My name is Karen Zager, and I was at the last Board of Ed meeting and listened to the beautiful and very detailed data presentation. While all teachers know that data is needed to drive instruction, I would like to clarify one thing. You call them data, I call them children. One glaring piece of data from that presentation was the achievement gap between English-language learners versus other students. English-language learners may not be performing well on state tests because the district is systematically destroying the research-based best practice for teaching them. According to the district, parents are no longer opting for bilingual education and are choosing English as a new language services instead. It is very hard to believe that after over 20 years of community members asking for bilingual education, they suddenly stopped and no longer want it. It is suspicious to me that after City Hall started processing the ELL registration and intake forms, community members suddenly no longer want bilingual education. I would like to know if the findings of a national longitudinal study are shared with families. That study states, quote, "English-language learners immersed in the English mainstream because their parents refused bilingual services showed large decreases in reading and math achievement by grade five, and those remaining finished 11th grade at the 12th percentile on standardized reading tests," end quote. Less than a month ago, I spoke with a family who was told that their child would be placed in bilingual classroom, but when he started, he was placed in a monolingual English classroom. When their mother called to have him switch to bilingual, she said that the district told her no. Since when do we not respect the legal rights of English-language learner families? I would like to remind the board and the district of the following sections of the New York State codified law. One, the right to have your children in a bilingual education program when there are 20 or more grade-level students that speak the same home slash primary language. Additionally, the right to call the New York State Education Department.
Thank you, Ms. Zager. The next speaker is Mr. Malfatano.
Hello again, this is Malfatano. Those are some very powerful...
Those are some very powerful accusations regarding the treatment of the bilingual students as well as the second language kids not being able to get their credit. That needs some serious attention. So it's Teacher Appreciation Day, I love it. I was a frontline teacher for 40 years. Development is good. I had you and the business office tell us that because of all the development, that's why we got shorted on an increase in state funding. So it's not so good. Our city fathers and mothers, in their infinite wisdom in all of this development, have seen to give away pilots instead of regular taxation. And you mentioned developer can have pilot or taxes. No, I don't believe that's true. We do not have to offer them a pilot. If you have money, maybe if you give $60,000 to somebody's political campaign, maybe that helps you. But we need to ask the other question. You got $6 million in pilot? What would it have been if it was taxed at the assessed value? Oh, we wouldn't get development then. Yes, we've been hearing that story. I've been in town 45 years. I've been hearing that story. But development has mistreated this district. The state now thinks we're very rich. Isn't that right? Couple of other things. The busing question. I'm asking those of you that may have friends who avail themselves of the largesse of our community in asking the taxpayers to front $5,000 to bus their kids out of town to very expensive private schools. Is it fair that these kids in bilingual class are being mistreated? Or the other kids, if true, are not going to get their credit because you're not going to offer them the red glass? I'm going to ask these nice families who have great political influence and help elect you guys. And that's why you sit here silently. Because fear is a very strong motivator in politics. What do you believe? Some of you are leaving the board. But you're going to be replaced by your handpicked successors? The two successful candidates already have their signs up around town. I've watched it for 45 years. Who are you to act this way? I know who you are, you're politicians. And you know where your bread is buttered. And you butter your friend's bread too. Ask these people who get $5,000 to bus their kids out of town. Maybe this year, we can't afford as much. Do you have the guts to do that? That's a rhetorical question. I know the answer.
Thank you, Mr. Malphatano. The next speaker is Mr. Giacomo.
So as everyone was talking, I have a few questions. I think Marion brought it up, or whoever. With all the superintendents that we had here before that we continue paying, we need to change something in our files. Why are we continuing to pay them when they mess up our district? And maybe they're the reason, one of the reasons why we're here where we are. And out of money, because we're paying how much money for people to sit home? And we're paying a new superintendent to come in? We're wasting our money. What's going to be done? What's being done at the high school? We're going to be taking away security? But meanwhile, we already have issues with security. Security don't know how to talk to our children. Security kicks people out of the bathroom. Everybody out of the bathroom because his kid's vaping. But what about my son with medical issues? Being kicked out of a bathroom because other people are vaping? Oh, would you want him to go sit on the lap of the kid already in the stall? Because he's waiting for the stall to get in there? And we call the school, nothing gets done. When are people going to start helping and making our school more safe? But no, we're cutting the budget, we're cutting back on teachers, we're cutting back on security. How much house will it feel safe in school? Once people are going to help us? I appreciate everything our teachers do, but sometimes we've got to be a little tougher. Oh, if I suspend every kid that vapes, we won't have any kid in school. Well, they need to have consequences for vaping. Because you know what? I had someone whose lungs collapsed from vaping. Every time that person wants to fly, they have to go for x-rays. Maybe we need to be more stricter on the kids that are vaping. Because the kids that are not vaping are suffering for their consequences in our bathroom. Feho left all our records, our students' records, at St. Gabe's. No one ever got, still to this day, never got back to me and let me know those records are safe, where those records are. I have pictures. Well, I don't know if I still did because I got a new phone, I got to check. But I have pictures of people going through our children's records, our records, those people who went there. Where are those records now? No one could ever give me the answer. Did we ever save those records since they were left behind? Like, we're messing up, and we keep messing up more and more. We need to do better for our students, our teachers. And we need to make sure our students' information and our teachers' information are safe. Not roaming in a building where people can get in and get access to it. I need something going forward. If you need a parent to talk, I got pictures of the x-rays in the lungs. I asked for pictures in the surgery. I have actual pictures where you see burn marks on lungs. Do you need parents to come in here and talk to these kids too? Reach out, I reach out to everybody. Still no, no answer. And then one last thing. When can we do a meeting like this for Yoganath Academy? We've been at PCA for four years and not had one meeting for our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Giacomo. The final speaker that signed up before 3:30 is Ms. DeSim. If there's anyone who would like to speak after her, please come up and register with the clerk. Thank you.
Good evening again. Mary Ann Sim, Alchoy. So want to continue with the budget because it's, we all know it's important. You just explained, you know, payment and you have pilot means payment of a lieu of taxes. We got $6 million, and they're good for our town, and they're good for our schools. How much were they supposed to pay? You tell us that they paid $6 million, but how much if they were paying their taxes were they supposed to pay? Then, how much do we spend tearing up our roads three, four, five times to expand our infrastructure to bring these buildings in? How much does that cost us? So when you say it's good for us, it's not true. Because there's a lot of cost to bring these buildings in. And them cutting a deal with you just because you're getting more than what you got before doesn't mean that what they're giving you is good for you. So we want the full picture. See, that's what we mean by you're not telling us the whole story and we don't trust your budget. It doesn't stand on very much. It doesn't take long for someone to listen to you and say, this doesn't add up. There's way more waste in this, there's way more things that we can cut that we did not have to go after our teachers, our world language program. I remember not too long ago, parents fighting for that word, world language program. You yourself said you're a Latin person. Any private school, top school requires that you take Latin. So when you sat there and said, oh, there's only three kids in Latin, so we're going to get rid of it. No. What you should be doing as an educational institution is helping the kids to understand why they should be in Latin. Instead of us putting our kids in English lab that can't learn and can't read, let's put them in Latin to help them really understand the root of the language and learn language. And guess what? I found out there are actually programs like that. Your Latin classes are now full. And you don't need all those extra English lab teachers. So those are some of the things that we can see and don't understand how you don't see it. You're there and you got insider information. We got to do differently. This budget is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeSim. Ms. Taylor Tanner.
Good evening. I just want to, you know, I think every time I get to the microphone, I'm going to constantly be talking about special ed. So Policy 4312 dot point 12 regarding timeout rooms, timeout and physical restraint for all students. Or for some students, it's in parentheses. So this is, this is interesting and it's good. But what are we doing? What are we really doing to prevent this type of behavior? So instead of talking about timeouts, so all the things here, because I spent some time looking at special education and the law as well. And I liked to go to Monticello last year for a weekend and just studied with NICE, special education and the law. So everything here I know. But the average person doesn't have the time or the luxury to go for a weekend in Monticello, which wasn't that much fun. But it was good. It was a good weekend, NICE training, and brought back a binder that I love to share with parents and with my colleagues. But who else is doing that? So I'm not going to be here anymore. And I know I'm probably the best teaching assistant in special ed that you will ever have. I know that. And now I'm a registered behavior technician, it's true. I feel that way. And I'm not disrespecting my colleagues because they would probably agree with me and say that I am. Because not only do I care about the students, but I educate myself so that I know that we are all being safe. The students are safe, and we are safe. And I've only been injured one time in 16 years. And I know I brought that to your attention, Dr. Reynolds. So this stuff is important because it's not fun to have a student restrained. I've never even had to restrain a student. So what are we doing in response to this policy? It's not enough to just say that we cannot put children in a timeout room, which we shouldn't. Here at Columbus, we have a sensory room that my principal and my assistant principal responded quickly so that we can have a sensory room. We send children out of this district to schools who have two sensory rooms. If each building had a sensory room, and I dare say if each building had a registered behavior technician the way the district asks for us to become, three of us are left, I leave now, and two are left. If you've spent more time with RBTs or training your staff, you might save some money with litigation. And this here is a great policy. But this and what are we doing in order to train our staff? We just recently had really good professional development training. I've spoken to you about this, Dr. Reynolds, as well. It was almost eight years before that that we had no PD training. Just recently, thank goodness for Michelle O'Brien and her quick response. And Joan Garone and Tracy, we had really good training now. We need more of that so we could adhere to this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor Tanner. The next speaker is Dr. Carla Wilbright.
Good evening. You know, it's almost overwhelming to listen to all of the difficulties that you are encountering and then we are encountering as a community. And unfortunately, I want to reiterate the situation that happened recently at the Davis School. I know you all are aware of the fact that there was an incident where a student had written the N-word in front of the Davis School just last week. And then there was a follow-up incident with another student writing the N-word in the bathroom at the Davis School. Now, these situations, we don't want to have minimized in this community. It's very important that we have swift and thorough investigation of these kinds of incidents and that it is addressed in a timely manner. We don't believe in criminalizing our youngsters, but we know that if we don't teach them at an early age the correct way to behave, we pay the consequences later on. And I'm sure that none of our families want to start visiting their children in prison later. So I'm asking you to make sure that we complete this investigation to these incidents, that we encourage our police department to take it seriously. And also, those children who may have seen these actions, we need to be mindful that our kids need to be safe from prejudice. They need to be safe from any threatening behavior. And we need to address these situations in a mindful way. And not only that, I know that there is protocol now for teachers and staff members to report incidents, but I would like to see that reiterated within the school district and that something is going out to parents and to the staff saying that these incidents are serious and being taken seriously and that the school district is addressing them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilbright. The next speaker is Mr. Keith Singletary.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to speak on, you know, relating to the recent announcement relating to reducing pathways as well as the budget, as well as share some comments that Congressman Lattimore and Senator Shelley Meyer provided this Saturday for community leaders. It was, it was very unfortunate relating to the announcement by Principal Artiles relating to the decrease in educational pathways. I strongly believe that we should, you know, the advantage of New Rochelle's Goose System is that it has historically provide many pathways for students at variance level to basically improve their ability, to basically advance their, and their goals to go to college. So when I hear about the elimination of honor courses, it did hit me pretty deep in the gut because I know so many students who have been able to benefit from that. I think we have to understand within New Rochelle, the benefit of our school district, the benefit of our town is the diversity, the diversity of individuals from whether or not the West Side or the North Side. And, and all these individual schools, all these community schools coming together in a high school and be able to have pathways of success is something that has, I value, and what I know many of my constituents and neighbors value. But with that being said, I understand that this is one of the steps that the superintendent took looking ahead relating to cuts. And I think we have to understand as a community the situation that we are facing. As Congressman Lattimore and State Senator Shelley mentioned, that at the federal level, we have to be vigilant. There's discussions on how they could bring cuts to local school boards. Speaking to the mayor of Mount Vernon, it was communicated that the fiscal cliff that we're dealing with, they dealt with last year. It resulted in cuts of schools. And those are type of avenues, those are types of decisions that I hope that our school district will not have to make. So I am happy to hear so many people who have supported the budget this, this evening. I too support the budget, and the reason why is because I believe we have to take a stand to maintain quality education for everyone. I think we do have to be vigilant and look at what other opportunities we can do to basically avoid being in this situation even, even deeper in the future. So we have to be creative. There are people in our, in our town, there are alumni within the school district who are willing to help you guys. But most importantly, I have to understand that we have to build trust within our school district. So many people in our community do not have that. And it really starts with communication and being clear exactly what's been done. And I hope next year, as we look at the budget process, we start a little bit earlier so that more people feel involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singletary. Are there any other speakers this evening for public comment? Thank you all. Colleagues, can I get a motion in a second to approve Consent Agenda for Personnel Resolutions Number 25-3661 through 1, Number 25-3671 through 15, Number 25-3681 through 6, Number 25-3691 through 5, and 25-371 through 10, according to the recommended action for each item?
So moved, Ross.
Second, Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Colleagues, for the next portion, I'm going to be separating out the consent agenda items. So listen carefully. May I get a motion in a second to approve Consent Agenda for General Resolutions 25-371 through 25-383, according to the recommended action for each item?
So moved, Lewis.
Second, Ross.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. May now have a motion to approve- May now have a motion to approve? I'm going to get this right. Yes, General Resolution 25 dash 384, according to the, yes, to approve 25 dash 384.
So moved. Castellano Minaya.
Second, Clayton Fernandez.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries. And finally, Colley, can I have a motion in a second to approve consent agenda items 25 dash 385 through 25 dash 388, according to the recommended action for each item?
So moved. Castellano Minaya. Second.
Second, Lewis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Now, our next meeting is a committee of the whole session on Wednesday, May 21, at the Central Administration Office at 7:45. Today, we are honored to adjourn in the memory of Virginia O'Sullivan, retired principal, clerk, Health Services Department, who passed away on May 19, 2025. Elsie Lyles, retired teacher at Ward School, who passed away on March 23, 2025. Mary Smith, retired teacher and learning disability specialist at IEYMS, who passed away on March 27, 2025. Gloria Sting-Camp, retired teacher at Trinity School, passed away on April 4, 2025. And finally, Lidovina Mills, retired foreign language teacher at New Rochelle High School, passed away on April 13, 2025. And with that, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved, Williams.
Second, Castellano Minaya.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good night, everyone.